Why the conflicts are coming?
You have to understand who you are. You have to understand why the Lord brought you in this path. We did not come by chance. Before the foundation of this world, we are separated by the God. If you are even a simple believer. Even be an ordinary person. So the Lord is having a great plan for bringing them to this church. First, we have to understand this. Why these conflicts are coming? If you analyze this first, you are able to conquer it. If you are not able to know it, you will just crying that you are getting conflicts and conflicts. You will take fasting. You will shed tears. You will tell, you will be telling to everyone. But you do not know why this happened to you. And you have to identify where this arrow is coming. We have to identify why these conflicts are coming. If he is not getting knowledge about this conflict he is receiving, then how he can overcome? Even today many are come with many problems. So 99 personally, just of your soul is asking question that why I am not getting deliverance till now? I have removed much well. I have taken my mistakes. I am even giving my rights. I come regularly to the meeting. I do not know what's the problem. Even if you are telling, I am ready to do that also. But I am not getting deliverance. In midst of this, the Lord is speaking to us. The giving announcing. He is encouraging me. He is just walking with me. And he is able to meet all the needs for me. So I am having many conflicts, but still I am coming out of it. I do not know why the problems are for me. This was the question of many people. This was the question that people of Egypt, Israelites were having this question for 400 years. And he is asking why the people were not get deliverance till now? And he is questioning God, why? You may also have such questions. When you see here. So you can see that's a great conflict. And Lord told them. I will deliver them. I am the Lord who waves the deliverer. When we see Book of Exodus, chapter 6, verse 6 and 7. I will take away the burdens of the Egyptian and will deliver you. Again, the Lord is telling in the seventh verse. I am the Lord, your God, which bringeth you out from the burdens of Egyptians. The problems of them is they are having a great burden. They are not able to carry the burden. So officially, they are having many pains in their body. They can work. So it is mentioned that they are serving for these wages. What happened to these people of Israelites? So first, they have to carry this sand and they have to make the bricks. So what are the wages will be given to them? They will not give money. So just they will give this not yet. So the whole day they were working, but they will have only this table for them. So with just selling them, they have to get a foot for it. So with such conflicts, they were striving hard. So after they were gone in a very strictious path. Till then they were getting this table at least. But in midst of this, Moses came in the people. And wonders started to work. And they are shaking. Egypt is trembling. But there is no delivery. What is the problem now? They have to make bricks. They have to carry burdens. So after that, they will not get this table. So the people were asking till now they were receiving it, but why you are not giving that from now? You know what is the answer? You have to work. So after finishing, you have to clean up the field which is given and you have to eat of it. And we are telling that we are just trusting upon the God, we thought we will get deliverance, but we are getting water. What are the questions? After knowing God, I am having such problems. After accepting Jesus, I have got such sicknesses. After accepting God, you are just putting list of it. And you are telling that till now I was managed in my life. But further, I am not able to manage my life. I am not able to maintain my spiritual life. People are not able to come out of Jesus. They are not able to enter into the world. And they are not able to press forward. So they are standing before the fire on this, let's see, they were standing the people. Why such problems arise? So we are going to meditate this. So we have to understand why conflicts are coming to us. If you understand this, you will become steady. So in a particular place, father beat his son. He was making some mistakes, so he beaten. But he do not know why father beaten. And the son was asking, why did you beat me? Why did you beat me now? He was asking his father. And he told that you done in this way. So why you didn't tell, inform me first? He was telling like that. And he told that I have committed mistakes, I could not understand, you can tell me then I can feel it. And he told that first, if you tell me, if I was not doing properly, you can beat me then. So what are the problems which are facing now, if you know the reason only then we can verify it. What was the problem came for this Israelites? So when they are entering to Egypt, there were only 70 people that came there. Only 70 people by the name of Israelites, they entered into Egypt. Now 6 lakh people got ready understanding. They do not know what is happening. Dear believer, the reason for getting this burdens and all this striving is because of the promise given to them. One of the reason for your problem is that the promises which is given to you and your children. Again, I am telling. So you may have some understanding about your problems, sicknesses and conflicts coming in your life. This is one part. But you are the inheritance of this promise. You have the land for it. You have a heavenly covenant. This pain and conflicts are presenting because of that promises is given and we are the seed of this canon. What does scripture is telling? When we see in Book of Isaiah, chapter 51, verse 14. And the Lord is telling that I will come and rescue you surely that if you, the promise is getting fulfilled in life. Book of Isaiah, chapter 51, verse 14. He will be hesitant. Dear believer. The Lord has brought you here to speak with you. The first day, the promise which is given. Or after finishing, you have received some 20 or 30 calls, is that a promise given to you? These are not the promises. These are the promises which is in the Bible. The Lord might have spoken through yours, that is the promise given to you. Those who are telling that the Lord has spoken the promises to you directly, raise your hands and tell hallelujah. The Lord has given promises for every person. So according to the promise which is given to you, you will have conflicts in your life. So according to the dollar which is given in your hands, you can spend your money. So according to the riches you have in your hands, you can spend. So what the promises which is given to you are spoken to you directly, according to that you will have conflicts. So the Lord does have to make sure that there is a law for you. The Lord is want to show the difference between you and the others. You have a little hand. And sure you will have a deliverance. All your bindings will be put in loose. So all the fetters and chains is bound and your legs will be removed. So there was a great burden and pains formed in the midst of the people. Not a small or little burdens. So sin is a burden. So all the burdens is a burden. So for all the believers, the sin and burden is surrounding them. When we see in Book of Hebrews, chapter 12, verse 1. So we have to lay aside all the every bite of sin that is set beside us, we have to run our race with patience which is said before us. All the burdens which are not able to carry, the Lord will not keep it from us. So you have to lay aside all the every white resistance to you. You confess all the promises given to you. Particular day, I was going to your place. And they was making to, making me to go to that place. It was a very small house. So the room was with asbestos. So. Husband, wife and three children. When I go there. There was no chat to make me to sit. There was no mat to put me down. So they have some bed sheets and they was taking it for me. So such poverty was formed in the family. So once I was ministering there. After 10 or 15 years, I was going to the place for preaching. When I go there. And they were introducing a person, he was a very rich man, he was just helping in for all the convention expenses. So 80 lakhs of money he was spending for that convention. So he became a very important person for this ministry. I was so amazed about it. I have never seen such people in my period. So after finishing my meeting, I told I want to meet him. He had just met me. And he enquired me who, who you are. And he told that you are the first person who just keep your feet up in the enough house. So then I was just asking that this person is not able to just put sheet for me, how he became a rich person? After the days passed. The Lord was just blessing them little by little. After this. So he started to converse all the, all the promises given in the Bible. So I like that days was passing, this promises going to begin as work in my life. This is the reason for my development. There are many promises given in the Bible, we are the seed of this promises. There are two kinds of group in the people. So one is the seed of a promise and another one is the flesh to see. I do not know what seed you belong in. So you have to identify it. When we see in the Book of Galatians. So it was mentioned the two seed for Abraham. One is the slave. That is called flesh. And also slip with your freedom, that is this promise. When we see Book of Galatians, chapter 4, verse 23. One is born by according to the promise. So we are all born according to our promise. So we are not just gathering the people for the worldly blessings. So if the person is following Jesus for this worldly thing, he is a reasonable person. For the people of Israelites, there is a promise. How many of you have received promises in your life? The promise which is given to you was fulfilled or not? Nala purinjigunno, vaakutatham nerevaravittal, nerevaru vara enna unde? Subject maaradu niyosikirinla, vaakutatham nerevaru varakkena unaka enna unde, intha poratham needigun. Till the promise is getting fulfilled in your life, these conflicts will rest in your life. So if this promise is fulfilled, then the Lord will give you another promise. According to that promise, the conflicts pursued you. Is there no incorrect? So when you close your eyes, you will see anything. So till you are in this world, the flesh against the spirit and spirit against flesh will work in you. He who is holy, he have to become holy more. He who is doing righteousness, do righteousness more. So this growth will come and still till we attain the perfection. When you come newly. So you will get received the little promises. Examine the job. And getting married. So literally, all the blessings will be coming to you one by one. When you become a spiritual person. After getting baptism. When you become membership of this church. When you are united with this church. Leaving you aside from this job and everything, the Lord is just eager to make, make you as a bride. That you will get conflicts according to your character. Till then you will not have these conflicts. Once Pastor Casey was, was telling like this. And he told that in the beginning of the ministry, I have murdered 27 people. Can you understand? In the beginning of ministry, I have murdered 27 people. And on that day nine gifts started to work in me. When he was just looking a person, he will tell the history of that person. One family in 80 years was, came to visit him. He was just speaking to a person in the room. And they were. An husband, wife were talking. After dinner, coffee shall be good. So they were speaking like this and they were, after the person was leaving, they were entered inside. So the pastor asked, you are just thinking whether to drink coffee and leave here? So they do not know how the pastor is able to identify this as the case of a person. All the officers and inspectors in the police department, they will come and inquire to identify the faults which is done there. And he told, I don't want this gift. Because no one is coming near him. And people are telling that he is a prophet, he makes something. And he told, in the beginning of ministry, I murdered 27. I don't have maturity at that time. I came very new then. And many become a struggle for me in the ministry. When I get tension. So if I get intense, then I will just pull the soil upon it and the name of Jesus he will be. And one person, what, what get it, made it, wanted to make me to complete out that ministry. I was just praying for him. He became very serious. I do not know whether the matter was known to him, but I know well. And two pastors were praying for him. So he was crossing that room. And they both were senior pastors and they told him to sit and pray for him. And he told. And I was made king per petitions for him. If you are able, you just cancel it. So I have made these petitions for him to die. He is the person who started to destroy the ministry. If you are able to challenge, you can take the life for him. How it will be? And the two pastors, he were a group, this, that, but we will not change it. Mannekeno, sakikeno, mulangal podu, ukaadi jomununonene, eevu mulangal poduonene, avan, avan saratharamulusunjala arumshita arthikasno. And the pastor was telling that you have to bear it all the blessings which is given to you and after that he started to prophesy for them. How Elijah prayed? So that was the prayer of Pastor Casey, where he says, Elijah prayed, I thought my words, there is no rain or snowfall in this land. So see how the persons were there in the period. So after getting maturity, he was able to understand we should not kill the other persons and this is a ministry given for, to give life for others and he started to do ministry in a particular way. So he was taken out of this ministry. I was just working in the faith home. And I was taken for the ministry, was known to my brother. So with great tension, he came to the church. And he looked at me. And he asked, where is that Casey Vargis? So I cannot do anything with you, I want to meet him. I got a fear, I don't, I could not resist my brother also, I was just thinking that he should not be disturbed by the pastor. He came directly to me. He was standing there, pastor. And he asked that you have took this boy for the ministry, just give the form to me. And he asked, what is the matter? And he told that if I'm going to the college, he was coming to the ministry. I do not know what is going to happen, I was confused, I was standing there. And pastor told, who you didn't go to the college, you just go to the college, he cursed me. And pastor told me to go to college. Within a second, he was making to go to the road. And my brother told that you just come to my home, I will keep you there. The same pastor was just making me to go to the bus, he was leaving me in the bus stand. I was standing in the bus stand. And pastor was. In the same place, my brother is always standing. They are powerful person, they are powerful. Why I am telling this? In the beginning, you will receive the promises of any to world thing. When you have become a spiritual person, this successful for this worldly thing will be diminished. And you have to receive the promise according to faith and character wise and you have to receive it and you have to grow in it according it. This was the problem happened in midst of the people. Till then they will be eating and they will building houses and they were going on again. After receiving the promise. When the power of deliverance started to work. So according the promise which is given to you, you will have conflicts. So did you take a decision to not receive cards? Before 2 months, a person was expired. I contacted him, maybe before yesterday, I would get the line. So the first, the promise given to my husband is be faithful till the death, I will give you the crown of life. After receiving the promise, I was just shocked to know it because the promise is that be faithful to the death, I will give you crown of life. Before 10 minutes, the pastor asked his father, what is the promise given to you, do you remember? Be faithful till the death, according to the promise, he was just running, receiving. So after telling this, 2018, no one will receive the promise. And for one person, I gave the card, he told last year also receive the same promise. This is not the time to just ask for that. The promise which is given by the God is through speaking through heaven through yours, that is called the promise. For that promise, you will have conflicts. For that promise, you will have problems. So the promise to be not be fulfilled, that devil is fight against you. But the Lord will be hesitant to work for you to fulfill the promise. It said, it is coming with 100 km speed, the Lord will come with 200 km of speed. I will hasten and come and he will deliver him to fulfill the promise.
I will hasten and come and he will deliver him to fulfill the promise.
पक्चिये पोलन ना इसरेवल कादरवा इर्पे
So I will be like a flying free, the people of the world.
अन अबिनाले वाकततंग बेट अवरगल दैरियमा इरंगाय
So those who receive promise, be bold.
इन्ना विदले आक्कले न्न सोल्ला द वाकततत्तु नेरे वेरन उडने उनके विदले गिडच्चरो
So after the promise is getting fulfilled, you will get deliverance.
अवरकु नोक्कु मुलुसु वाकततत्तु अवना नेरे वेट्टनो
So the purpose of the Lord is to fulfill the promises given to you.
वाकततत्तु संदर्याकी ईसा के पोन पादे उंगुले के तेरिमे
You know the promise which is given to the seed I said.
ओर कालतले य इस्मेवेलाल परियासमन्ना पट्टान
He was just mocked by Ismael.
इन्नोर बगिला अवन बलिबिडतले करता पट्टान
So when he was just put on the altar.
हाँ इवेगल कु मत्तीला दा अनके जीवन किडएत्तदे
So amidst of that, he was receiving his life.
वाकततत्तु संदर्य एंद ओर वल्लमी ए सेदपडुता मुडियादे
So the seed of the promises cannot be consumed by any power.
अने परियासमन्नला अन ओन्हे अलिकमुडियादे
They may mock you, but they cannot destroy you.
अन अबिनाले इंद्रीले रंदु निंगल इंद केल्वी विट्टुवडंग
So from today, you must leave this question.
इन्नुम देवन ने विदले आक्कविले एन्न र केल्वी विट्टुवडंग
You have to asking the question, why the Lord did not deliver him till now?
इंद केल्वी निंग अनेगर कुलरुके
So this question was found in many persons' life.
निचय ओनको कुडुता वाकततत्तुके उनको पोराट्टम उन्दे
One is certain that the promises which is given to you, you will have conflicts.
इरण्डाव दाग
Secondly
अप्पोसल पनिरण्डा मधिकारतिल पार्कुम्बरदे
When we see in book of Acts, chapter twelve.
अंग एन्ना पन्ना एन्ना वेदा वसन चोलुकरदे
What the scripture is telling.
अंग पेदरु शिरचालयल कडंदा
So Peter was found in prison.
इसरेवल जनंगल को ओर सुमय ओर बारम
For people of his faith, there is a burden for them.
अना पेदरुके ओर शिरचालय
For Peter, there is a prison.
ओर कट्टपट्टन नलवरतिल कडंदवन
Yes, having a state of bounds.
अदे अदे अवनके एदनाल अनुमरिक्के पट्टा
Why it was admitted for him?
अप्पोसल पनिरण्डा मधिकारतिल ना पार्कुम्बरदे
When we in the book of
आरा वसनतले अवन शिरचालयले इरंदु संगलीली नडुए कट्टपट्टवनाई कानपट्टान
So we can see that in the sixth verse, he was bound with two chains.
विडिंजा अवन कोलसे नुन ना आवी पोराडु
So at the morning time, he got to destroy him.
कालयले विसारन एन्न र पैयरले पेदरुवे कोलसे येर ओरु मुडिवे डुता
So Aaron was putting him for the inquiry, to put them
अवनके ओर टाइम दार रंदे
So there is a time for him.
नाल कनक के करेगा
Not a days.
अवुंडे वाल्के मुडिरदुके मनिकनकुगल एन्ना पो काउंटडाउनले रंदिस
Only few hours given for counting.
एप्पडी इरुकुन योस्यू पारंग
See how it will be for him.
अंद नरतले इर्कुम्बोदे
At that time
कतर ओर तूदने अनिप्पी अवन वेलिया कोणुवार
The Lord is sending angel and he is just delivering him.
ओर कालतले अवन विदले आवाचिता
Once he was just getting his deliverance.
अन इप्पर रंबा अप्सट आयिता
Now he was upset.
पेदरु टोटली अप्सट
Peter was totally upset.
एन्ना वनिता
What he did
जबम मंद्र विट्टुता
He started to pray
तुदिक्करदे विट्टुता
He was leaving this place of God.
मुलंगल पोड़दे विट्टुता
He leaving, he standing on heels.
विलित्तरुकरदे विट्टुता
He just leaving his watching.
सत्ता सावरदु इर्ना इरुकरदंग र मुडिवे को वंदिता
He came to the point that let me die.
पारंग ओर प्रदान अप्पोसल
So he was a high priest.
ओर वल्लमी वायिंद मनिदन
He was a powerful person.
अम्म चुमा अप्पी नर्दु बोना अवन नलल पट्टवन निसिवा सोहमायुवा
With the sound of many are healed.
ओरतना एसवी नामत्तिल तूकि विट्टा सप्पानी 40 वर्ष सप्पानी नर्दुरुआ
When he lifts a person in the name of Jesus, he will be walking.
कई विचा एल्लार का अभिषेक
If he is keeping his hands
अबडी पट्टा ओर वल्लमी आना मनिद
Such a powerful person.
इप्पा अवुंडे वाल्के ले शिरचालय वंदुवितादे
But a person came to his life.
मरना नम्म कुरिक्के पट्टुवितादे
And death was pointed for him.
सुत्तम एल्लामे अप्सट आयिच
So he was completely upset.
हाँ जबम मंद्र ला नम्बीके पोइच
He was not able to pray, he lost his hope.
जबम तुरितल विलितल पोराडु ओन्नुमे करेगा पेसाम इलुत मुड़ी पड़तुइता
There is no prayer preposing God and he was leaving everything, he was just leaving.
यत्नीयो विश्वासीगल तंगलडे ओ पोराट्टंगले एन्ना विदले इल्लन सोलिटे जबिची जबिची बादिती इप्पा एन्ना लेवल को वंदाचे सुत्तम जबमे करेगा
Many are not having deliverance for their problems, so they are not praying, just putting in for everything.
बाइबल रीडिंग करेगा
There is no Bible reading.
देवसमोदु पोरदु करेगा
They are not coming to the presence of God.
गरंगगिट तोडरबे करेगा
No touch with the servants of God.
अबिन कुमी यारुमे चावलीला
They don't want anyone.
नाइट लंच तूको
The whole night, they were sleeping.
पगलाला न तूको
And the day full of hurts sleeping.
विलिचरिंदु पोराडु ल
They are not watching and praying.
अधिकालले एडुमरुदल
They are not getting a
मुदलाम चामत्तले कुपरुदल
They are not calling God at the watch.
ओन्नुमे इल्ला इप्पया एन्ना नर्दचे एन्ना नर्दचे
What happened?
इप्पा अंगुले के नान यनकी एन्ना देवन चेंजितारे अबिन ओर विरक्तियाना ओर बदिल
So they were just telling that what God has gave to me.
हाँ पेदरु एल्लाती मुड़ी पड़िलुत मुड़ी तूइता
Just Peter was sleeping completely.
येन अवनकी इंद पोराट्टा
Why the problem was for him?
अवन कुडुता अवनकु देवन कुडुता ऊलियत निमित्त
Because of the ministry given by God to him.
Even if you give any ministry, I will do.
If they are telling there is no ministry for at Sunday school, even I will.
In the Sunday school, the children will take money from the school. So they will receive money from the Sunday school.
Sunday school children will buy food.
So I will just serve for the Sunday school children.
Whatever ministry is given, you must do. You should not be. One thing is certain, there is ministry that you have received, you have conflicts according to it.
What Saint Paul is mentioning about it.
24th century, 24th century. I am desired to fulfill the ministry which is given in the hands of the Lord.
So whatever conflicts may come, you should not leave praying.
Whatever may come, you should not leave this early morning prayer.
Whatever comes first to watch, pray, you should not leave it.
If the Lord is not working, you should not.
Then we will conquer you. After coming to the spiritual life.
For the sake of God.
The conflict which is coming to you because of the ministry which is given by the saints of God. You must do any ministry. When I was a believer. It was a very small church. I used to spread mats. I have to clean it to help group mats.
So I have to clean the bathrooms at roadside.
So outside there is a button and I have to. After spreading mats. After setting mics. The meeting will start.
So that brother will speak a local language, I have to put it in pure Tamil. So after finishing, they will flee away from the place. Again, I have to rearrange spreading the mats and I have to keep the mics etcetera, right? And I have sweep and then I have to go home.
Understand well that you have to do something for God. You are the servant of God. You must do anything.
You give tracks to the roadside or go to CMC and drill the gospel.
You go and do ministry there. You just pray for the two sick people. Proclaim the word of God for any people. If you don't have that grace, just spread mats here. After everyone is passing away, you just.
Golden temple.
I have gone to the golden temple.
Amritsarasaliruk.
I have gone to the golden temple. I want to see how it is. So after going, they just make me to put salt. So I wanted to know what is going in this golden temple, just I was putting my cash.
They all were looking at the idols, just I was going to the place.
So I was just going to the kitchen side.
So all the sick people, there is a found at the place, they were working like anything.
Not this people or that people.
They are having the crores of money, were standing online and they are just giving for the money for.
Those who are coming there are just given as free food. So chapati is coming from that machine.
Who are the ladies? Who are the time table? We are not going to time table. It is just a pair of clothes. We are not going to time table. We are not going to time table.
So those volunteers at that temple, they were working very beautifully. So at the one particular place, they were serving. So line by line, they are passing the place after eating. So they are putting in a soap water. One group of sick people, they were so rich, they were just washing the plates. And they were just drying it. Again, this coming for the rotation, going to the.
All freely, they are doing the work for the God.
So what we are doing? Will you do like this? So if you give the cup of water, there is a reward for it, the promise is given to you, even if you come to your house, you are not giving. So there are a grown group of ladies. So there is a team, they did not give this water for them. So in the marriage, they are putting many expectations. If you see the biodata, you will be amazed. After seeing the biodata, I was surprised.
A lot of water. How to prioritize, spiritual prioritize. After that, automatic cast. After that, expectation. How to wear white t-shirt, wheat t-shirt, yellow t-shirt. After that, last. There are three houses, this one has a house, that one has a house, this one has a house. This one has three houses, this one has three houses. Three crores of market. If you have the biodata, you will get it. If you have a girl, you will not get her. If you have a girl, you will not get her.
So in the biodata, they are mentioning caste and everything, and they are putting the expectation also. The expectation that the house will be three crores, if they have seven crores, they can do the marriage. Do you think that they will receive heaven? Will they get heaven? So it was a far distance for this heaven.
So Isaac will look at her. So Isaac was when he was seeking for the lady to see for this Isaac.
He was just lamenting and he was praising God and was going by the way. So Isaac was forty years old. I don't know how you have to look for the lady. He did not know what to do. At last, he was missing. So he was telling that you have to fetch water for me and for the candles. So it is meaning that until the last, you must make a party, you are putting water for them. So now they are telling that just there is a water, you just take it. After coming to the spiritual life, what we are doing? You have conflicts according to your ministry. You have bindings and prison because of this ministry, do not fear. The Lord will send an angel, he will give you deliverance. The Lord has given Moses for the people of his race. In the Acts of Apostles, chapter twelve, the Lord made angel. There is a promise for your conflicts. Secondly, the ministry that you have received from the God. You must do some ministry. If you are not able to do anything. Just be on heels and pray. That is the greatest ministry. Standing at the gap. Pray for the people of Velu. People who are destroyed, you have to pray. Do the prayer of ministry with faithfulness. Book of Daniel, chapter three. They have a great conflict. That was a fiery trial. So many people, they used to tell that I have got a very great fiery trials. They have received the direct fiery trial. So they were just entering into the seven times of the burning furnace. Why the trials for them? So there are many people who are found there. Why the people are not receiving such? What is the reason they are receiving this trial? Those are going through fiery trials, just look unto these words. We have crossed this fire and water. You may not walk upon our head. Only after this, you have a fertile place. So the fiery trial is a. Those are going to heaven, have to have a fiery trial. So you may go to the fire, but you will not be quenched. So what is mentioned in book of Isaac?
So you may walk through the fire, but you will not be burnt.
So if the fire trial is given to you, if you are failing in this, there is no use of giving. So for Job, though not the witchcraft problem. Not the magics. This was the trial of faith. It was a great fiery trial. Even a single day, thirty people got. So the crores and crores of money was lost. So whole body got sickness. And his wife was telling that you may die. But the Lord was trusting that he will win this trial. So his hope was not put in vain. So likewise, you will also have fiery trials. Why? Those who are worshiping God will have the fight. If you are worshiping very good, you will have this trial. Those who are coming ten forty five, leaving at eleven fifteen, there is no trial for him because he is not coming in time. Those who worshiping God will have trials. Those who worship will have the victory also. The Lord who worship you whether he was raised in your ministry will escape you. Before that, they were confessing. The Lord who are worshiping, he will is able to and will deliver us. Even the Lord is not going to escape us, we are ready to give our lives. The Lord was described to haunt for the knees of you, Ben. To just put obstacle for your worship, he will describe. You should not diminish your worship. If for fifteen minutes you are worshiping God, for half an hour. Through their life days, you have to worship the Lord without seizing. The worship is very important for us. Those who worship, he will be. The person who is worshiping will become holy. At heaven, you are not going to do any achievement, you are going to worship God. The Lord of Moses is holy. That was the voice.
Wherever you go to heaven, yeah, the voice is going to be heard as holy, holy, holy.
And you are also going to confess holy, holy, holy. Those who worshiping you will have the conflicts in your life. Those who are heroes of faith will have conflicts. For the seed of promises will have conflicts. Those who are doing ministry for God will have conflicts. What happened? Because they are able to consume the fire. The flame was not able to kill upon them. What happened? And the Lord who is able to, likeness of came in the midst of the fire. Do not worry about anything. Do not decrease your prayer life. Do not decrease the speed of your prayer. Do not decrease the time of praising. Even it is impossible by you, just keep on praising God. Let his soul just be with God always. Let the fire of praising burn in you. Let there be contact with God through praising. How many are desiring such life? Do not fear about the fiery trials. Those who are worshiping God will have fiery trials. Those who are worshiping came out of it. Even the smell of fire was not found in them. Glory be to the holy name of God. How long you are worshiping God? And it is scriptures mentioning the angels are just looking the worship you are doing to God. So the word of God is telling that this worship is the likeness of God. So it was the likeness of heaven. Even the angels are desired to look over it. So how we have to honor this worship? This worship is very important. The spirit of God will come into the high furnace for the people who are worshiping God. From today, you start praising God. From today, you start praying. You just be vigilant. From today, you just worship God. Be on knees. Lift up your hands. Close your eyes. Look unto God and cry. Day and night, you just limit your eyes, not pain. At night, at first watch, you just get up. You just shed tears like water river. So the scriptures telling like this. How many are worshiping God like Sadraakmeeshika Abetneegon? Paul and Silas got such path in their life. So they was getting this bloodshed. So the legs were bound with the priests. Everyone was sleeping there. What they did? They are not able to be on knees. Because their eyes, legs were tied over that tree. You know the tree well? If you are keeping your legs there about upon the tree and below the tree. So it was just blood was shedding over them. What they did? Oh, you did not deliver me. Don't you have eyes? Did they ask like this? They started to be feeling and anointing and they were praising. And all the foundations of the prison was shaking. You should worship should not be decreased. Those who worshiping God will have fiery trials. Book of first Samuel, chapter twenty four. Fifteenth verse. So after three messages, I got this message. I got one message. So at last, I was receiving that message, what is the reason for the problems? Many are telling that I was not getting deliverance, deliverance will come upon you. He will not come from heaven. He is just waiting to stop babbling with you. He just sent angels for you in the prison. He sent a servant God for you. Or he will send angel. His Holy Spirit will come with. So to deliver the people of his. For deliverance of Peter, Angel came. For the deliverance of Sadraakmeeshika Abetneegon, a god, a man, a man. When we see in first Samuel, chapter twenty four was fifteen. And for David, he was having a great conflict and he was getting deliverance. When we see second Samuel, chapter twenty T. First and eighteen verse when we see. So he is telling that he was getting a great conflict, but God delivered him. How we get deliverance? It was amazing thing. So he was just risking out of the hands of the soul is amazing thing. So delivering from this, this line is a great thing. Why he got this conflict? So he was just standing simply, he was just making. He made them into king. So he started to lament that I was like a dead dog, I was roaming around here. The reason for his conflict is that anointing have received. For our anointing, you will have the conflicts. So even if fulfilling by the Holy Spirit, at the same time, there is a difference of the anointing. The anointing of one person different from other. When you are anointing one person. He became a king. When one was anointed. He became a prophet. When one person was anointed. He became a priest. When he was anointed. He became a evangelist. So we can see many verses found in the Bible. So the Aaron was with the anointing was come upon him, was changed as a priest. So the so making going after the flocks, he was changed as a king. So the Aaron was with the anointing was come upon him, was changed as a priest. So the so making going after the flocks, he was changed as a king. So the so making going after the flocks, he was changed as a king. So Elizabeth, Abishag, who was anointed, she was changed as a king. But commonly it is called as anointing. When according to the situations, when the anointing descended upon the person, one became a king, another became priest, and another became a prophet. When Jesus, the anointing was descended. He became an evangelist. When they just got this anointing. They became the cherub to rescue us. So there are five characters for this. One is priest. Fourth is evangelist. You are going to rescue. I don't know what anointing is found upon. I am very confirmed about my anointing, that is priestly anointing. So those who marry, they are not having confusion, only the youngsters are having this confusion. So those who are anointed, you should be very careful, you should not change the bus and you have to go. Those who are going in Zion bus, you should not go to Zion. So those who are being in Jerusalem bus, you should not come to Zion, then you will get the return tickets. You have to analyze perfectly, then you have to board at the bus. Are you for Zion? Are you for Jerusalem? Recently, one married. They came to meet me. And they told that he belonged to ministry, before three weeks, he have to tell this, why you tell now? And he is telling that I was making it to here, he told that he is having this calling for ministry. Delay, getting married or going for the ministry, identify whether you are for Zion or with. You have conflicts that anointings is set upon you. For the problems that you are saying, facing your family, the anointing. The problem of your business may be the anointing upon you. You may be high and heavenly calling because of that, you may have conflicts in your ministry. He is having a great conflict. He is having a conflict at home. At wife. The children. Because of this father-in-law. Because of the beast. Because of the. Because of the. Because of the. There were many conflicts found for him. But the anointing horn was just increasing. He was developed in anointing. There was no diminution found in his anointing. And he told that he would allow his anointing with the oil from tomorrow. So he was the person filling in anointing. And one place he was filling, I was becoming a. Another place he was telling that my vessel is overflowing. How your anointing is? At least for fifteen minutes, are you able to fill in anointing? Are you speaking with the God who called you? Are you able to speak with the God? If you are sitting for a while, there is something upon you. Are you speaking only in unknown terms? When anointing comes. With the sin. Neeviya kurithi. Judgment. Nyaayathi kurithi. Nyaayathi thirpai kurithi. The Lord will just reprove you and give you. When this anointing is coming upon you. When the spirit of this coming upon you, he will lead you in the great truth. There are many steps in anointing, when the time comes, I will preach. So for every anointing, there is a growth. So according to the anointing, this is given to you, we are having conflicts. So don't think that you are having the conflict, you are the person who have preserved this anointing. When you leave this anointing, there is no victory for you because he conquered you. So the Lord is not leaving you. He will induce you. He will induce you. So he will giving you new anointing. And a fire will come upon you. And you will be rising up immediately. And you who are lame will be leaped and you will jump. Through anointing, because of the anointing, you will get the prize. Greater than he is, the world is greater than he. How many are having this conflict? You can see in the Bible. So when we compare this twelve disciples, Saint Paul is having great conflicts. Why? He is anointing is precious. He is having right anointing. With that anointing, no person can do any harm to him. He was getting beating. I was so amazed how he got beatings this much. So if one person is getting beating, they will just put in a newspaper. So one ninety-five abstracts. So thirty-six hours, he was sinking in the water. So at one place, he was stoning him, and he was death like a dog, they were pulling him. So the apostle was started to pray for him, was still coming, rising up, and he was preaching in the next street. Will you do like this? Are you able to do like this? I believe I was going to a particular place, I was preaching the gospel. One person slapped at him. And he was just. He was taking away all the microphone. He just called me. He bit me. And he also taken away his microphone. I asked where you are, what you are doing. So without knowing, he was going to Dindikal, he was preaching in these meetings. I told I will pray. So I was not able to hear properly, just pray for me. I prayed for him. So after half, fifteen minutes, he was. What, I asked what happened. I received a microphone. And one person gave to me. I asked whether you board the bus. And he told that I was preaching gospel in the next street. Beating upon the beating, he is receiving. So after putting amen, they will flee from this place. So after putting amen, they will flee from this place. Can you tell, any person tell through, because of anointing, have you able to perform something for God? Because of the anointing, you are having conflicts. Glory be to the holy name of God. When we see book of Jeremiah, for chapter forty. So just they are putting. I received the microphone.[536.58][536.61][S02. He made them into king.[537.38][537.41][S01. And one person gave to me.[538.68][538.71][S02. He made them into king.[539.48][539.51][S02. He made them into king.[540.28][540.31][S01. I asked whether you board the bus.[541.48][541.51][S02. He made them into king.[542.28][542.31][S02. He made them into king.[543.08][543.11][S01. And he told that I was preaching gospel in the next street.[545.78][545.81][S02. He made them into king.[546.58][546.61][S02. He made them into king.[547.38][547.41][S02. He made them into king.[548.18][549.61][S02. He made them into king.[550.38][550.41][S02. He made them into king.[551.18][551.21][S01. Beating upon the beating, he is receiving.[553.58][553.61][S02. He made them into king.[554.38][554.41][S02. He made them into king.[555.18][555.21][S02. He made them into king.[555.98][556.01][S02. He made them into king.[556.78][556.81][S02. He made them into king.[557.58][558.11][S01. He is saying.[558.98][559.01][S02. Amen.[560.38][560.41][S02. He made them into king.[561.18][561.21][S02. He made them into king.[561.98][562.01][S02. He made them into king.[562.78][562.81][S02. He made them into king.[563.58][563.61][S02. He made them into king.[564.38][565.11][S02. He made them into king.[565.88][565.91][S02. He made them into king.[566.68][566.71][S02. He made them into king.[567.48][567.51][S02. He made them into king.[568.28][568.31][S02. He made them into king.[569.08][569.11][S02. He made them into king.[569.88][569.91][S02. He made them into king.[570.68][571.61][S01. So after putting amen, they will flee from this place.[574.58][574.61][S02. He made them into king.[575.38][575.41][S02. He made them into king.[576.18][576.21][S02. He made them into king.[576.98][577.01][S02. He made them into king.[577.78][577.81][S02. He made them into king.[578.58][578.61][S02. He made them into king.[579.38][579.41][S02. He made them into king.[580.18][580.21][S01. Can you tell, any person tell through, because of anointing, have you been able to perform something for God?[584.58][584.61][S02. He made them into king.[585.38][585.41][S02. He made them into king.[586.18][586.21][S01. Because of the anointing, you are having conflicts.[589.68][589.71][S02. He made them into king.[590.48][590.51][S02. He made them into king.[591.28][591.31][S01. Glory be to the holy name of God.[592.58][592.61][S02. He made them into king.[593.38][593.41][S02. He made them into king.[594.18][594.21][S01. When we see Book of Jeremiah, chapter forty.[595.98][596.01][S02. He made them into king.[596.78][596.81][S02. He made them into king.[597.58][597.61][S02. He made them into king.[598.38][598.41][S02. He made them into king.[599.18][599.21][S01. So just they are putting in a.[600.68][601.71][S02. He made them into king.[602.48][602.51][S02. He made them into king.[603.28][603.31][S02. He made them into king.[604.08][604.11][S01. They put in a well.[605.28][605.41][S02. He made them into king.[606.28][606.71][S02. He made them into king.[607.48][607.51][S02. He made them into king.[608.28][609.11][S02. He made them into king.[610.88][610.91][S02. He made them into king.[611.68][611.71][S02. He made them into king.[612.48][612.51][S02. He made them into king.[613.28][613.31][S02. He made them into king.[614.08][614.11][S02. He made them into king.[614.88][614.91][S02. He made them into king.[615.68][615.71][S02. He made them into king.[616.48][616.51][S01. There was no water in the well here, that is because they are putting it down, he was going down.[620.78][620.81][S02. He made them into king.[621.58][622.51][S02. He made them into king.[623.28][623.31][S01. He was found there.[624.98][625.01][S02. He made them into king.[625.78][625.81][S02. He made them into king.[626.58][626.61][S02. He made them into king.[627.38][627.41][S02. He made them into king.[628.18][628.21][S02. He made them into king.[628.98][629.01][S02. He made them into king.[629.78][629.81][S02. He made them into king.[630.58][630.61][S02. He made them into king.[631.38][631.41][S01. So he made me to come up this mighty clear, he put me in the rocks and he was establishing me.[636.28][636.31][S02. He made them into king.[637.08][637.11][S02. He made them into king.[637.88][637.91][S02. He made them into king.[638.68][638.71][S02. He made them into king.[639.48][639.51][S02. He made them into king.[640.28][640.31][S02. He made them into king.[641.08][641.11][S02. He made them into king.[641.88][642.61][S02. He made them into king.[643.38][643.41][S02. He made them into king.[644.18][644.21][S02. He made them into king.[644.98][645.01][S02. He made them into king.[645.78][645.81][S02. He made them into king.[646.58][646.61][S02. He made them into king.[647.38][647.41][S02. He made them into king.[648.18][648.21][S02. He made them into king.[648.98][649.01][S02. He made them into king.[649.78][649.81][S02. He made them into king.[650.58][650.61][S01. So he was put in the dungeon, when he was coming, be able to come up, how long he is coming up, he will be going down again.[656.18][656.21][S02. He made them into king.[656.98][657.01][S01. So see how such a man he is.[659.18][659.21][S02. He made them into king.[659.98][660.01][S02. He made them into king.[660.78][660.81][S02. He made them into king.[661.58][661.61][S02. He made them into king.[662.38][662.41][S02. He made them into king.[663.18][663.21][S02. He made them into king.[663.98][664.01][S02. He made them into king.[664.78][664.81][S02. He made them into king.[665.58][665.61][S02. He made them into king.[666.38][666.41][S02. He made them into king.[667.18][667.21][S02. He made them into king.[667.98][668.01][S01. So he is a very desirable and a good prophet, he is telling that if we get off waters and vice, a fountain of tears, weeping day and night for the people.[675.08][675.11][S02. He made them into king.[675.88][675.91][S02. He made them into king.[676.68][676.71][S01. But now they have put them in a dungeon.[678.68][678.71][S02. He made them into king.[679.48][679.51][S01. No salvation for him.[681.38][681.71][S02. He made them into king.[682.48][682.51][S02. He made them into king.[683.28][683.31][S02. He made them into king.[684.08][684.11][S02. He made them into king.[684.88][684.91][S02. He made them into king.[685.68][685.71][S02. He made them into king.[686.48][686.51][S02. He made them into king.[687.28][687.31][S01. He was trying, but he was just going inside again.[690.18][690.21][S02. He made them into king.[690.98][691.01][S02. He made them into king.[691.78][691.81][S02. He made them into king.[692.58][692.61][S01. What is the reason for his conflict in his life?[695.18][695.21][S02. He made them into king.[695.98][696.01][S02. He made them into king.[696.78][696.81][S02. He made them into king.[697.58][697.61][S02. He made them into king.[698.38][698.41][S02. He made them into king.[699.18][699.21][S02. He made them into king.[699.98][700.01][S02. He made them into king.[700.78][700.81][S02. He made them into king.[701.58][701.61][S02. He made them into king.[702.38][702.41][S01. So it was the responsibility to tell the proclaim the word of God, either you know, understand or not, I don't know.[707.68][707.71][S02. He made them into king.[708.48][708.51][S02. He made them into king.[709.28][709.31][S01. So what mistake have committed, why they put him in a dungeon?[712.18][712.21][S02. He made them into king.[712.98][713.01][S01. What is the mistake committed by him?[714.58][714.61][S02. He made them into king.[715.38][715.41][S01. He did not commit any mistake.[716.68][716.71][S02. He made them into king.[717.48][717.51][S02. He made them into king.[718.28][718.31][S02. He made them into king.[719.08][719.11][S02. He made them into king.[719.88][719.91][S02. He made them into king.[720.68][720.71][S01. The reason for his conflict is because he uttered prophecy.[723.98][725.01][S02. He made them into king.[725.78][725.81][S02. He made them into king.[726.58][726.61][S02. He made them into king.[727.38][727.41][S02. He made them into king.[728.18][728.21][S02. He made them into king.[728.98][729.01][S02. He made them into king.[729.78][729.81][S02. He made them into king.[730.58][730.61][S02. He made them into king.[731.38][732.31][S01. So I was just watching the people, only, many are gathered here, only few uttered prophecy.[737.58][737.61][S02. He made them into king.[738.38][738.41][S02. He made them into king.[739.18][739.21][S02. He made them into king.[739.98][740.01][S02. He made them into king.[740.78][740.81][S02. He made them into king.[741.58][741.61][S01. So many prophets, they are given via us.[743.98][744.01][S02. He made them into king.[744.78][744.81][S02. He made them into king.[745.58][745.61][S02. He made them into king.[746.38][746.41][S01. Even the Lord is rising them, they will never tell.[749.18][749.21][S02. He made them into king.[749.98][750.01][S02. He made them into king.[750.78][750.81][S01. I think many people got retarded in this.[752.68][752.71][S02. He made them into king.[753.48] So prophet should be a prophet till your death. When you come to the presence of God come with word of God. One prophet prophet at this particular church he will come Saturday. He will keep you on crying at road. So while you are coming you receive the word of God. So crying and he will come to the church and he will utter prophecy. How many are telling prophecy like that? I was in a church. I have father mother and a child. Three children. So the five people they will utter prophecy in the church. I was a minister of God. And wife will tell. Then the son will tell. Then daughter will tell. After that all the believers will tell. So the house is found there since of prophets. How many prophets are found? Whether you got the word of God at once. So after getting married I left it. After getting job I left it. We for four years had stopped it. So many have lived in the city uttering prophecy by telling many reasons. Why you are coming late? Why you did not come to meeting? So they are just blaming upon the babies if you don't want you can pray for them. Taking your baby you are just taking them to the marriage and your relative house. Think and see the Lord is looking everything. The conflicts which have received because of the prophecy. The prophet will have a conflict. So the Satan will work against you the prophecy should not be. All the prophet should not be. You have to receive the word of God. I used to tell in all the places. First the prophet have to receive the message from God. Listen. So you have coming to the presence of God you have to analyze either it for you for the church. If it is for you just keep it up on you. If it is for church. Lift up your voice and utter prophecy. Not only that. You have to receive the message completely. Getting just half of the message and you should not utter prophecy. After receiving the message completely. There is no need to speak in another. So if you are telling prophecy mixed up that if you are telling in this unknown tongues we are able not able to understand clearly. Have to receive. Send two words to say. Received early until at two or three words it will be a great propower in the church. That's the word of God is telling. When we see E book of first. Fourteenth chapter. Twenty four twenty five when we see. If a new person is coming to your church. So just getting of the prophecy he will be convinced of you. So all the things which is found in his heart will be revealed outside. And he will tell the God is found in our midst. So those who are prophet you will have conflicts. You have to receive the word of God from God you have utter prophecy. Being a believer don't you have receive any word from God? You are praying for only for moments together don't you have any word from God? You are praying for your business don't you receive a God word? So there was a depression in the connectivity of the God. What happened there? And a person who was telling to the king that Jeremiah was going down. And he asked who will give water? Who will give bread to him? He will be seen. There is no Jeremiah to receive. And king told to lift him up and come. And thirty persons lifted him. And one person he was lifted up with thirty persons because was completely was sunk. Because of the prophecy you may have conflicts but the Lord will lift you up. If you are getting conflicts because of prophecy you just keep on doing the ministry. Tell the word of God particularly. At a particular place a person was proper but he became backslidden. I know him well. So by seeing my preaching he used to tell it is good so he will come he keeps pursuing another church. So he was so revival. After the days was passing. He just came to the same level. He was going to wrong way. His wife was changed. His wife told. Now he was not with us. He settled in some other place. And at all I can pray for him. I got transferred who went to some place. I got received a phone call. A person called me. Pastor you have to pray for me. I told. And he mentioned his name. I told that he was got backslidden why you have to pray for him? Why should I pray for him? Now he got was in a terrible sickness. What is the sickness? So if he was able to sleep lying down he can speak he was getting up he cannot speak. See what a problem. If he was lying on the bed he can speak. If a sitting straight he cannot speak. So when he was checking the doctor he told within a few minutes he will pass away. So he was just screaming and was crying looking at the house. So he was praying. So his wife was so small in age. So and he told that he was asking forgiveness to me. I told him you will never repent about praying for him is a waste. She told that. So at the time of the day the day will dance like that. So if you are telling. If at ten o'clock. I just bet that as. What happened there? I was at Nazareth. I was walking in the ground I got this phone call. So just about his wife was just asking me I told to give a phone call. So the problem is he was lying only he can speak. He was standing he was making to sit right. So if you are in lying position he will be alive. So what she did then he gave the phone call to him. I told him. What you are expecting me to pray? And he told that I got repented. I don't know whether it is true or not. I will pray only two points. I will not pray more than that. I will tell only two words. It's correct. The thing is. Lord you know whether he got repentance or not. Because I was one fifty kilometer far away from him. I was at faith home he was at hospital. How can I know that he got repentant? So I prayed then he got repented then let him be healed if it is not repented he put in a judgment. So this is a prayer was I was able to do at that time. So when I was playing like that he was just crying out shouting at the hospital everyone were coming near him. But there was no repentance. You've got a true repentance so he got. So repentance is very important. His prophecy is important. Because of the prophecy you are uttering you may put in the dungeon where the Lord will lift you up. When you see book of Exodus. Joseph is having some conflicts. He got a great conflict. He got two kinds of conflicts. Because of the vision dream you have received. Because of the dream you have dreamed or the vision you have seen you will have conflicts. You have to understand well. So some dreams you cannot understand. So some dreams you can identify well. So some dreams will be evidently will be happen. So all the revelation vision and dream have received he got a great conflict in his life. So when his brother was putting them in a pit. Was seeing him what he told. So they were telling the dreamer is coming if you kill him I will let us see how his dream will come true. What is the reason? Because of the vision and the dream you have dreamed. Did you dream any dreams? What dream you have dreamed? Satan has followed your block his cup. You have to see the vision of heaven. You have to see the vision of heaven. So at the age of seventeen he is able to receive a dream. So when he were telling that his dream that sun and the moon and eleven stars obishing to begin and he was asking that whether it is able for the path to fall upon him. The problem because of the. To destroy the vision given by God. One thing is certain your dream will come true. The revelation will be fulfilled. Till it is getting fulfilled no one can touch you. You may be given in the strange hands. But you will come to the throne. So for all the dreams and vision you have received you will have conflicts. So the Lord is making to put in the pit because of the brother and he was making to put on the throne. Sufferings pains reproach and shame are the way for the throne. Secondly what is the reason for his conflict? For holiness. So to get a flee away from the sin he is having great conflicts. The sin is just holding him. He first shaken he was going away. What happened at last? Because of that he has received punishment. Because of that he received reproach. He was enduring it. And this was just making to put making glory. So just he was put in because of the chains of fetuses and what he were done by God he was able to deliver. His word is able to save him. He was as made in the prison garments. He was not able to go anywhere. He was not able to shave there. He was shaven and came there. He have changed his. Within a few minutes he is able to receive throne. Let us all close our eyes. Today you may have received the knowledge worth the problem for a conflict. When you stand for holiness you will have conflicts. When you stand for truth you will get conflicts. You have to ask no none can separate me from the love of Christ. So how many are able to understand the reason for your problem? What the word of God is telling? What does the answer the Lord is giving oh you didn't deliver even me till now? So in Exodus five twenty three why there is an own difference? So the book of Exodus six six seven. Not only to you what you see also will be detailed breast. Let us all close our eyes and be on knees. I have kept seven things before you. Because the conflicts because of your promises given. The ministry which have received from God make conflicts. For the prayer and worship you are doing you have conflicts. For the precious anointing I have received you are getting conflicts. You are a prophet so you are a great conflict. For the revelation dreams and visions you have received. So you have make a decision to stand for holiness because of that you have listed conflicts. Those are able to understand the problems or conflicts just be on knees and close your eyes. So any one of the thing of you have received we have problems in life. You are a man of God. You are chosen by God. You are a prophet. You are a seed of promise. You are called to worship God without ceasing. The anointing which is you found is a king. You belong to throne. So because of that you are getting conflicts. Have you all be on knees? Now you tell. Have you identified the reason of your problem or conflicts? Understanding what I am telling you just put on your hands. I identified the reason of the problem of this because the promise is given by me. So because of the ministry I have given I received because the conflicts are for me. Day and night without ceasing I am praying because of that I am conflicts I have identified please raise your hands. So I am able to understand that the conflict is because of the anointing which is given me is precious and different. The word of God is found in me. So because of this word of God I have got conflicts. The Lord have shown me many things because of that I have received conflicts. I have take a decision to live a holy life because of that I have received conflicts. You just keep your right hand lift it up. So all the people those who tell seven things that are maybe failure. I told six persons. All these six persons were delivered. Jeremiah got this conflict but he was delivered. Joseph got the conflict but he was delivered. David got conflict but he was delivered. Shadrach Meshach. Peter got conflict but he was delivered. The people of Israel is got conflicts but the Lord delivered them. Dear child of God. For you for your deliverance the Lord will rise as a servant of God for you. The Lord is going to send angel for your deliverance. The Lord with Holy Spirit descend upon you to give deliverance for you. For your deliverance the Lord himself will come upon you. The world is greater than he that isn't you. The Lord will make it possible to rise up for you. On account of Paralogamayarangivaro. There is a deliverance for you. Your days of sorrows will be end. The days of your conflicts will be end. Don't tell that I have not had deliverance the Lord have kept the days of deliverance for you. This is the day of deliverance. This is the day of deliverance. Do not fear. Do your ministry boldly. Proclaim the word of God boldly. You receive the anointing and be faithful to it. Day and night I cry unto God. Do not forsake the ministry. The Lord has anointed you. There is a deliverance for you. There is a victory for you. There is a throne for you. Amen hallelujah hallelujah. Hikshabala thidabakka thidabaniya. Oh thidabakka thidabakka thidaniya. In my life in my career my problem is I have identified. Those are telling that I have added to the reason for my problem this morning. Because of the light of the dark I have received the identify the problem they put up your hands there is a deliverance for you. The other thing other persons will not get conflicts. And others will not have this conflict. Only you will have this problem. Again I am telling the Lord is going to deliver. This is the day of deliverance. This is the day the Lord is going to rise up for you. The Lord will send a man. The Lord will send a servant of God. Or he himself will come upon us. Today for your deliverance from heaven the Lord is proclaiming the word from you. Though so believing affirmatively the promise of the Lord is sending a word to you. The word deliverance of his word. Hallelujah hallelujah hallelujah. Hikshabala thidabakka thidabakka thidaniya. Oh thidab thidabaniya. Amen amen. Watayale vidudalaye. Watayali vidudalaye. Watayal watayal. Watayali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Watayali vidudalaye. Watayali vidudalaye. Watayal watayal. Watayali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Abiyal abiyal. Abiyali vidudalaye. Hallelujah amen. Amen. There are four ways were given for the deliverance. So there is no use of receiving one of the four powers. You have identified the reason for your problem. But you want deliverance for it. If the son is delivered surely you will be delivered. You will know the truth and the drought will be delivered. But the spirit of God there is liberty. His brains will set right or deliver. The Lord have to send anyone among you. Either the anointing will come upon you. Or the power will come upon you. The grace descend upon you. The word of God come upon you. Hikshabala thidabakka thidabaniya. Amen amen amen. Hikshabala thidabakka. Wallamayal vidudalaye. 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 Wallamayal wallamayal. Wallamayal vidudalaye. Wallamayal wallamayal. Wallamayal vidudalaye.